This is the December 14th here for the zoning board of adjustment. And Adam, you can start us off. Thank you. Thumbs up from Adam, so we're online. And I'll start off with introductions. We have Kyle Bates on my left alternate, and he'll be acting as a voting member tonight for Megan Kelly, who's going to be absent tonight. Peter Broderick is a member. Robin Carter is our administrative assistant. And I'm Peter Coffin, Chair. Rick Russman, member. And Shaw Tilton, member. And so we have a full board. The -- we'll start off with the only hearing we have tonight, which is a public hearing for Carl and Ellen Money at Fork on Cannon Road map U1 lot 59. And the applicant's requesting a variance to Article 301, Section 301.1D to permit the improvement and/or placement of a single-family dwelling structure located within 20 feet from the left and right side of property lines. And why don't we have the people who are here tonight for that meeting, the presenters, come up and tell us who you are?
Hi, I'm Carl Money. My wife is Ellen.
Hi, I'm Ellen.
Okay. And you hold their information.
Tom is out of contact.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry.
You hit this button to read, and then you can talk like this.
It's a microphone, and you can tell by the reverb. But mostly, it's because when we record this, it's going out on YouTube live, and it stays as a recording. And if you don't use the microphone, even though we can hear you in here, people at home won't be able to hear you. And so we need to have you just -- you push the button once, it turns the light green, and then that will enable you to speak and hold it about this far away, and it'll pick up your voice. And then you're all set. So Carl Money and Karen Money? Sorry, Ellen Money?
I'm Ellen Money. This is Carl Money.
Okay. And go ahead, and Tom is?
Tom Alaso is that contact?
Why don't you come on up? We're informal here.
Hey, John.
Rick, do you want to pass that down?
Sure. I got one. Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Tom Alaso. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So why don't you go ahead and start? And I know we've all gotten the packet and read the material and seen the plans. So why don't you just give us a little rundown of what you're doing?
My wife will run it down for us.
Well, can I first start with, my grandparents bought this cottage house back in 1940. Six generations of my family have been there. My grandparents, my parents, my grandparents, my parents, us, our children, and our grandchildren. So we're very invested in this. Actually, the day I came home from the hospital after being born, this is where they brought me. So it's very deep ingrained in us, so that we really just want to grow old here. That's what we want. And I just want to add that. That's not anything, you know, just the personal side of it, that it's very important to us. So we would like to replace our home and make it better so that we can live there comfortably. So should I -- do I read some of this stuff to you? Or how do I approach this?
I don't think so. Has everybody read the package? Okay, I'll tell you what we might make this more efficient is that we will go over a few things, like, make a little note. What makes this property unusual is because it's not unusual for Kingston ironically, because it's on the lake, and they were all built before any of this wetland setbacks. And most of them were built as summer cottages, and so the septic systems aren't always up to the capacity of a year-round family. But, and we see that, and we're grateful that this is going to involve a new septic system that's removed to the -- within the ordinance specifications for distance from the shoreline and all that's a great improvement. So the board, I'm going to tell you right now, is on the side of people who are improving and making improvements that will reduce the amount of nitrates running into water because you know from the cyanobacteria and everything else that the lakes around here are having a real problem. And we can't really do much here tonight to control global warming, but we can certainly help make sure that Kingston, and you're doing it, is -- gets less nutrients into the water that you're living on. So the reason why we should say that Article 301.1C is about setbacks, and generally speaking, variances are apt to be granted if you make a non-conforming situation, which this obviously is less -- oh, sorry, D. Okay, I'm sorry. C is a waiver. Is that the board tends to look on anything which improves the conformity with the zoning ordinance as an improvement, and is more likely to grant that kind of waiver. I'm not going to state things. For anybody who's watching who wants to know why, thank you. There are a couple of other parts under 301.1, and it involves distance along the roadway, for example. There's a 200-foot requirement for distance. And let me just open this up, so it's up in front of me. Okay. So 301.1A requires a 200-feet frontage on a public right-of-way and a minimum area. In case the building inspector didn't actually grant the waivers, the ordinance provides for waivers for pre-existing non-conforming, anything that was a lot and a structure on record. And it says in 301.1C, which is the waiver article, it says, "In any district in which structures are permitted, a structure may be erected on each lot which was a lot of record at the date of adoption or amendment of this ordinance, even though such lot fails to meet the minimum requirements for area or width or both." So that covers the 8,000 square foot area requirement and the, actually, also the three-acre area requirement for acre protection zone and for the frontage requirements. So that's why there's no requirement, that's why, the only one that was required to get a waiver variance from is the 301.1D. Also, the property is in the acre protection zone. And that one, it says, "A waiver under Article 201.1.7, which allows non-conforming uses to be, quote, 'maintained, repaired, and improved, but not expanded.'" By "expanded," they're talking about the use being expanded. So, you know, going to a two-family house or something like that, you wouldn't be able to do because that would be an expansion of the use. But your use is residential, single-family house, and so that's why, I think probably you wrote the article, the thing, although you did.
John did, my uncle did.
Okay. So that, about it being an improvement. And I did check with New Hampshire Municipal Association attorney, and they said, yes, that certainly qualifies. And even though it's new construction, you know, a tear-down and rebuild is not an expansion of use. So that falls under the maintained, repaired, and improved category. So you aren't required to get, to meet all the requirements of the acre protection zone B. Shoreland Protection District, a waiver under 205.9, which allows non-conforming uses to be maintained, repaired, and approved, not expanded. Sounds familiar? It applies to you because you're in the Shoreland Protection District. So that's by getting on record the explanation of why we're only dealing with the setbacks from the sidelines. And so, I guess I should ask if there's any questions from the board about this that they want to get answered, because that's the way to go here.
I'm just going to kind of summarize this, and if anybody sees that I'm saying something that's not correct, please. I'm looking at a non-conforming lot, but you're improving it. You're making it less lot.
Right.
You're going from the property line five foot eight to eight foot four.
Just repivoting it.
So you're improving. You're bringing the house back by, I think it's 10 feet.
Off the water line.
So what's 50 is going to 60. That's improving it.
Correct.
You've got a biomass, which is innovative technology. Are you the installer?
No.
No, okay. But that was approved by Darren King, who's been up at the subsurface for 20 years, and it's approved by the state. So you're making the septic system better.
Agreed.
Next to the lake. That's a good thing.
It's also going farther away.
It's far back as we could put it. Correct.
Yeah, it's beyond 150 feet.
We're pumping up to it.
Setback, so.
You know, so, I mean, if I remember correctly, biomass would be the original design for close to lakes. So this is probably the right one to put in.
It's a new system.
It's what they call innovative technology. It's a relatively new system, but it's been approved by the state of New Hampshire.
Correct.
You know?
Correct.
And that has to be a Darren, when he said, sorry. You know, I've known Darren for 30 years. So, I mean, everything seems to be, there's no change in use. A single-family is a single-family. It's an improvement across the board. I personally, based on this, and basing everything in the stuff of research, it seems to be, seems to be good across the board.
Thank you. Any other comments?
We tried to keep a very modest floor plan, you know, not going up.
Yeah, and then I noticed that you tried to add that.
We saw you stayed in the footprint of.
Correct.
You're going to increase a little notch.
The reason why we did that is because the current house is on a stone foundation, and with going to a concrete foundation, we can put our utilities in the basement, which means we need to add one set of stairs down to that basement. And as you know, a set of stairs takes up about that square footage of that notch. That's really all we're gaining from expanding that notch is allowing us to put a set of stairs down to the basement level. That's why we bumped the notch out. Correct.
In the past, one of the things that I noticed that kind of caught my eye was the amount of what you referred to as paving on here. And I did check, we had problems in town with people putting down rap, which is reprocessed asphaltic material. And it, the state does not consider rap to be porous ironically, even though it's kind of loose, because it packs down and the asphalt seals it together. I did check with gravel lock. They have a porosity of 20, what was it, 20 gallons per minute per square foot using three-ache and stone, which is the same as if you didn't use the binding material, because the hard rock just contacts the same place the stones would contact anyway.
Yep.
So I was impressed by that. It is a fully porous, it's probably, I can't ask, but you know, it's got to be expensive, but it's a fully porous material, which definitely improves the situation on that lot, because the entire paved area is going to be fully porous and allows infiltration. So just letting the board members know that in spite of all that paved area, it is, it is fully porous. And any other concerns that were coming up that we can address this? I will say that the setbacks, I think what we'll do is the proposal, and the way it appears on the warrant for this, is for the same amount of distance on both sides. And we did that because the outside staircase is not, it's included in the setback when you have a part of the structure, that's considered part of the structure. So we wanted to use that distance from the outside of the staircase. So I looked at where that, how close that was, and it looked like it was about the same. I tried to measure off the larger set of plans. And so when we come around to deciding, we're not going to give you two different setback requirements. In both cases, setback is greater than from the line, sidelines than it was in the existing conditions plan. So that's, it's not an issue for me, and I, any member of the board can weigh in, see if that is for them. But that would, that would be why we're using the same number for setback from the sidelines. Any questions from the board members about that? And what do we end up, Robin, with for the actual?
21.6.
Yeah, the difference between 20 and, I can't read that, 8.4 is it now?
Yeah.
And, yeah, so 11.6 would be the variance required. Okay, yes, thank you. So the variance, 14.2-foot variance where 20 feet is required, and that's the existing. Oh, here it is. 11.6 variance for setback requirements, 8.4 where 20 is required. So when we get around to making any motions, be sure that we include that, that the variance setback requirements, and it's just for the sides, right? Because the front of the lot, it's set fully back from the front of the lot. So, no, I'm just going to ask in right now, a public comment. We need to open this up for a public comment, if anybody wants to make any comments. So I get a no from the one person who's not already at the table, so we'll close public And does anybody feel that there needs to be any kind of, mic?
Further discussion.
Well, further discussion or any, any conditions, sorry, that's the word I was looking for, other than that the plans that are submitted be followed, I think would be, and the plans, they become part of the notice of decision, you know, they're referenced to the architect and the date of the plan drawing, so that there's no question to the building inspector about what has been approved. All right. I don't want to just talk for the sake of talking. If you don't have any questions for us, and we don't have any more for you, I'm entertaining a motion.
Make a motion to approve the variance.
Of 11.6-foot variance for the side setback requirements. Yeah. Second from Rick. And the variance to Article?
Article 301.
Yeah, yeah, I had it handed to me.
Is it Article 301?
Yeah, yeah, you know what? This is a variance. I knew there was missing something. Thank you. You do have to go through these articles.
Steps.
Steps. And you all have a variance worksheet in your packet. So while we're all know where we're going with this, we didn't actually go through the procedures. I thought it was a little too fast. All right. So the first item, normally, if you're presenting, you would give your reasons for why, and we can, you have those, did you submit that as part of your application form? Yes. Okay, yeah.
You want to make a motion on another one?
No, why don't we just let them, we're not going to do deliberation. Yeah, they should just, they, yeah, that.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. So the variance, first item is, state why the variance is not contrary to the public interest.
Okay, you want me to read that?
You can just give a quick synopsis if you want. You don't need the full legal. Oh, my goodness, yes, this is the one, I forgot about this one. I read it when it came in. Okay. So I'm wondering if they can state as submitted.
Can we do that?
Yeah, as submitted, and then we would.
Make it integral part.
And then we decide whether that argument, we deliberate on whether that article, so you can just, you can do that for all of them. You've submitted your request, and we can close the public, not the public hearing, but the, that part, we can move on to deliberations, and we can go through that, and.
I would offer it to the applicant only if there's additional items that you want to say that has not been written within the packets you gave us.
I think we had to cut it off.
Yes, agreed. But, yeah, but just if you wanted that opportunity.
And I would say that we don't have to use the same wording, but we can say that the proposed variance will not be contrary to the public interest, and we can vote on these, but.
We agree per submission by the client.
I think, I think we need to state in our findings a fact, so that it will not be contrary to the public interest because the.
It will improve the existing setbacks. It will improve for.
It makes the non-conforming less non-conforming.
Makes non-conforming.
Less non-conforming, thereby improving the problem.
I would, I would say that it makes septic conforming a significant improvement in septic.
Well, if you say non-conforming, it's a more conforming method of error.
Yeah. I would, I would distinguish that there are setback improvements, and then there are, then there is the actual septic system improvement.
Yeah. You know what? We're not being asked about this, we're only being asked about the setbacks. So let's just, in spite of the fact that we think that that's a very compelling argument for this construction, quite frankly, the setback is, it just makes the non-conforming structure less non-conforming. Okay.
Peter, I think it makes sense to explain to them the process that we're going through right now.
Oh, yes, we're deliberating on these processes of, these are the requirements for getting a variance. And, yeah, thanks. And we have to not only decide whether it's true or not, but give a reason for why we put that. I won't editorialize here, just keep it simple. So I would say that we have a reason. I'm going to take, ask for a vote on all those who agree that the proposed variance will not be contrary to the public interest. Raise your hands and say aye. Aye. Okay. So that's five, and there's no abstentions or negatives. Okay, the second one is if the variance are granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed because, and these are usually taken both at the same time, because the spirit of the ordinance is really the public interest, that the reason of the ordinance exists in the first place. So.
Let's make the non-conforming use less important.
Spirit, yes, because, same as one, you know, same as, you know. Okay. So all those who believe the variance, if the variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed because it would be improved and, yeah, improved.
The character of the neighborhood is not altered.
And the character of the neighborhood is definitely not altered, yes, that's true. And that would be a factor if you were right next to somebody and you were getting closer to them. You moved the house over, you might, you might, it might be better for setbacks, but all of a sudden, you're looking in the neighbor's window. So this doesn't change the location of the house. So same as one plus, what was it, Kyle? Doesn't alter the.
Alter the character of the neighborhood.
Okay. Okay. That's Adam's tap to remind us to use the microphones, because he's responsible for the broadcasts. He's our director.
Loud pressure.
Yeah, alderness, being an alderness does not mean your microphone gets turned on. Alderness, even if they're acting only as alderness, they still deliberate with us. All right. So all those who believe the variance is granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed. Say aye. Aye. Okay. So that's another five and out. And we have reasons. There is substantial justice in granting the variance because, and we fill in the because, but, and it says, "Any loss to the individual that is not outweighed by a gain to the general public is an injustice." So if we said there is substantial justice in granting the variance.
Because the interest of the public is assured by the setback of the lake.
Yeah.
Respect to Ellen.
Yeah.
And the value of the setback.
Okay. So there is substantial justice in granting the variance because, sorry, there, all those who agree that there is substantial justice in granting this variance, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. J, okay, yeah. All right, that's five and out. Four, the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished because, and there's no change in the location, location or size of house, new house would have higher value presumably.
I was going to say possibly improve the value.
Value.
So it's a negative until approved.
And.
Improve surrounding value of property.
And I would also add less runoff to neighboring properties and lake. Yeah, I would say, yeah, I think we've got enough there. Also, all those who feel that the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We get five and zero. Finally, five, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship because, and here we have a variety of ways we can achieve that. One is owing to the special conditions of the. and here we have a variety of ways we can achieve that, one is owing to the special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, there is no fair and substantial relationship between the public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property. And the proposed use is a reasonable one. And B here is only if, if we can't meet section A, so let's, I, I'm going to see if we've got something in here that we can pull out that. Okay, so. The first prong of the hardship analysis requires the board to determine there are special conditions that are subject to variance request. Since the existence of those special conditions which, so here's the special conditions, here we go, of the property, for the purposes of this variance criteria include the layout and location of the existing residence, the substandard but lawfully non-conforming lot size, and the fact that the property is the applicant's primary year-round residence. As there are special exceptions of this property, first prong is satisfied, so I, I would say the, the key criteria there is that it is a substandard, but lawfully substandard. I'll write this down, lawfully substandard, what is the term he used, lot si, lot layout and size. And quite frankly, the, the purpose of the ordinance, which is to create a setback, would apply to new development, or where you have large lots. But where that has already, and, and this is true of almost all the lakefront properties, except for the Rigs, there's no way you're going to be able to get, to get that kind of setbacks from, from the historical use of those properties, so. Any improvement to that has got to be, even though it's, requires variance, has got to be compliant with the purposes of the ordinance. Seems to me. So. I mean, you can look at it this other way, if, if this variance wasn't granted, we'd be left with a sub, a, a worse situation, not just from the septic standpoint, which is, you know, as the health officer was, you know, he, he keys on that, but, but from, but from the neighbor's standpoint of, of, you know, a few, for the sake of a few feet, they have the old 1940 cottage.
Well, I think the whole beautification of the whole lot itself is going to make a massive improvement on everything, so.
And, and quite frankly, you have an unusual situation that you have a town road running across your property.
Right.
And that's, you know. I don't know if that's a right of way, or if it's just something that, it was one of those things that always existed, and, you know.
It started way back in the 40s.
People started driving across the corner of the property, so, you know.
Make sure you get plenty of materials saved on the basis.
Yes, we are.
Yeah. I'll tell you, just as a quick story, when I worked on a lake in Hollis, New Hampshire, that was the same situation, there's a small lake with lots of summer cottages that converted year-round homes, and the laws were different back then, and people used to build around one two-by-four, leftover from their original cottage, and build their new house, because that was what, what was the improvement that was allowed, and that's one of the reasons I made sure that if we tear down and rebuild, it wouldn't be considered an improvement, and New Hampshire Municipal Association attorney confirmed that, so. That, that you don't see anymore, but that was, that was what people used to do, they'd tear down to, you know, a four-foot stud wall, and start building from there. Okay, so. And two, that the proposed use is a reasonable one because it's a permitted use. I, I. Permitted use in zone, and that's what is meant by reasonable use. The fact that it's a permitted use in that zone, residential use in a residential zone, it's therefore, by definition, it's, it's reasonable. Any other board comments on that, on the deliberations? All right, like to take a vote on literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. All those who agree with that, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And that is the last of the criteria, so I'll entertain a motion for a waiver from 301.1D, right? Yeah, allowing setbacks of eleven foot, eleven point six foot variance.
To grant the variance, right?
To grant of eleven foot, eleven point six foot variance from point foot setback requirements.
I'll move.
Okay.
He beat me.
Well, you, yeah, you can second it.
I did.
Oh, okay. So, that's Rick and Pete, Rodrick, Rick made the motion, Pete, Rodrick seconded, and did you get the motion?
Could you, could you start the beginning, because you said waiver?
Yeah, yeah, I was just wondering if I said, I was looking for a motion to grant.
To grant, okay.
A variance of 11.6 feet from the setback requirements of art 10, 301.1D, right?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and a discussion on the motion. And, and also add to the motion that having met all the criteria. Is that okay, the motion, because it met all the criteria, the criteria of the variance, and it's the second or, okay. Superfluous, but, all right, all, all those in favor of the motion to grant the variance, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, yeah, all right, again, five and zero. And we have the usual cautionary tale, which is that people have 30 days to file an appeal of this, including yourself if you appealed. But anyways, I would not start, well, sorry. You are at your own risk if you start the construction before that 30-day appeal period is up, let me just put it that way, so. But you still need to, the building inspector will get this variance notice, and you'll still need to get the building permit from him. I was, I was looking over at Robin and saying, there is somebody who can give a building permit, isn't there?
There is, present.
He's, yeah, three times.
Might as well.
So. And he was the one who issued the letter of denial, and stating which, which was the thing.
Yes, it's very efficient, he comes in and, and maybe once a week, but he does.
Yeah, so. That will go to him tomorrow.
Fine, but that building permit, well, he already got the notes from the state.
You should collect what you need from me and bring it to him, okay, because he may have his own requirements, and he may need a check, I don't know. So, I have it with me, I can get it.
Yeah.
Probably will need a check, and if you begin construction, it's, it's terrible. I mean, I'd probably build it if I were you.
Yeah.
Meet the weather, but at the same time, you want to understand that you're going to build.
And you'll get a notice decision, we have their email address, obviously, since this is all done by email. You'll get a notice decision by email, probably about, within one week from today, five business days. And the mailed copy may take a little longer for US Postal Service, but Robin will mail it out in a week, or less, so.
It's notable anybody will complain, but that's why we have to go.
We, we have to say that.
So, if you do start construction, do it in your own.
And just so we all understand, if somebody does complain, what's our next step then?
If they appeal the decision, it would be an appeal to the zoning board first, and we would decide whether we had made a mistake based on what is in their appeal that said we missed. Like, Robin hadn't. It would, it, yeah, but, and we have given reasons, so. So. It would be a request for rehearing, we would then decide whether we should re, if we made a mistake, whether we should rehear it, or if there was new information that came in, like your house is now underwater, and that.
Want to make sure we know the subject.
Yeah, so, so then, if, if we denied that appeal, they can take the appeal to the Superior Court, that would be incredibly unusual. Yeah, thank you, yeah.
If I were your neighbor, I'd write it up as well.
Yeah.
I would, I would be interested to see what, what, what.
Well, you probably won't get that chance, so.
Having been with how, what we get in respect, you have to say it's how people love what they call their neighbors, but, so you never know.
But, and, and I know there was information on one of the set of plans you said about floodplain zoning, but make sure that the that basement elevation and all that conforms with the floodplain ordinance, because it is in the floodplain zone on the, I didn't mention that in the beginning, but that's not one of our considerations, but you do need to make sure that's all taken care of, because otherwise you may not be able to get flood insurance or something. Yep, thank you very much for being here. We will close this public hearing, and at 7:45, yeah. Yeah, well, it, the, the. The procedure leading up to this may have been painful, but. Yes.
I have a say, if it's good, I did it, if it's bad, I don't really matter.
Do we have that appeal?
You do, it's the last part of the stuff.
Motion for variance, okay, so. Oh, okay. Oh, okay, yeah, you made the copy of that from. Here we go. So, the, um, this is a request for a rehearing for the Sauhegan? Wait a second. Oh, that's, sorry, that's a letter decision, yeah, 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 okay, thank you.
Peter, Peter, just before we start, I'm wondering if we should accept the minutes from the last meeting, because the Sauhegan refers to what we stated? So, it's in the record, it's approved?
Yeah, I, I, okay, we can, we can bring up the minutes, I do have.
Maybe we should do the minutes first, because we can spurry up the minutes.
Right, and then the draft minutes, and this is why.
Can we accept the minutes?
No.
No, no, that's, we, we have some changes.
You can.
So, one of the changes, I'll, I'll give you the, the typo changes first, just, because that's easiest, and I have just.
I'm sorry, we had a bunch of changes already too.
What's that?
You said you had a bunch of changes.
Well, I had, yeah, I had two. And what? On the top of a piece of paper here that I had. Okay. Here it is. So, on line and the minutes. Where are the minutes? So I can. Get rid of that, get it. That. That. That and that are gone. All right, do you see the minutes, second, yeah, it's got to be, there, there, right in the bottom.
Play it real.
Yeah, it should be, because I kept looking after I found it, all right, so I would say line 100, where it is, is, I'll read it to you. It says, "For a long time, this has been servicing as an automotive repair shop," and I'm going to change servicing to serving as an automotive repair shop.
Change to what?
Servicing to serve it, it's a, it's serving as a, it's been serving as an automotive repair shop, not servicing as, servicing means fixing it. And then on line 348, it says, "A new garage is built plumbed into the house's septic, they started using it," so the house, it's just only one house there, so it's a house singular possessive.
House.
So, it just an apostrophe S, house, apostrophe S, that house is septic, so those are the two types, the other thing is that in the minutes, differ slightly from the transcript, which I went through the, I don't know if you know, you can do this on YouTube, you can bring up transcript, even, even on a live broadcast, like a Slack meeting, it'll go through there, and then you can run, you know, if you're watching it on repeat, you can run through the transcript and, and see what people say, it's got all of my ums and ers and stuff like that, but it, it does help, so. Take a look, see what. Okay, here it is. On line 294, "Mr. Jones said he doesn't have anything tonight, but asks that the board continue them so they could try and produce and, and, yeah, they could try and procure and produce that evidence. Mr. Coffin said that he can ask the board, but it may be irrelevant, because even if we knew the previous tenant had used it, the pre-existing non-conforming use has expired during Mr. Connor's owning it." So, basically what we're saying is that and I, I think everybody was here, when Mr. Jones mentioned that visit about a continuance, actually, I'll read what he said. Hold it. Uh, let's see. Didn't get a chance to highlight this. It's expired now, okay, so, oh, yeah, "Mr. Jones, I don't have anything in black and white here tonight, and I guess maybe I, I'd, as in I would, ask that the board continue us so that we could try." ask that the board continue us so that we could try and procure and produce some of that evidence, if," that's kind of, and then I stepped on him, I guess, because it tails off. So, um, I'm going to suggest that we, um, say, be, because it's, it's important that it's a conditional request. And so he says, "If," so, um, uh, "Mr. Jones said he doesn't have anything tonight, but asked the, uh, if the, no, uh, asked the board, asked the board continue them so they could produce and prove that evidence, and then, uh, and then, it may be in quotes, just, but if that's kind of, and then unintelligible after that, and then end quote. So, so he said. So, uh, after the word evidence, and before the period, but he says, "Some of the evidence, if that's kind of," and then in parentheses or brackets, put the word unintelligible.
Unintelligible.
Unintelligible, there's, we couldn't tell what he said, because I stepped on it. It's my fault, I should have let him finish that, "if," because, um, and then I, end quote. And then, uh, then he said that, uh, "It's irrelevant because," and then he, so you covered that, and that is exactly what I said. Then down on line, what did I say, three oh three? "He is asking that his argument to the board, that this is a pre-existing condition use, pre-existing use should be reinstated solely because it expired for the logistical reason it's compelling. He asks that we continue," and so, so it should have the word "if" in there, because he says, "If my argument to you is, uh, that this pre-existing use should be reinstated solely because it expired due to logistical reasons is compelling, then I'd ask maybe we continue." So it's an "if then" statement. Uh, so, uh, I would put in, on three oh three, it says, uh, after the word "board," comma, that, then insert the word "if," because he uses it. "If uh, this is a pre-existing use, should be restated because it expired for logistical reasons is compelling, comma, then maybe," did he say "maybe?" Yes, uh, "then maybe we could continue." Or, or ask, yeah, then he, yeah. Compelling, comma, then, then instead of "he asked that," it said, "then maybe," because these are exact words, "we continue." So, strike "he asked that," and he says, "then maybe we." And you can certainly go back and, and review the transcripts on that. It's, I can give you the times on that, for anybody on the board who wants to go and check this. Uh, the first case was at thirty-eight fifty-two, enter the recording, so you don't have to listen to the whole damn thing. And the second was thirty-nine forty, where he says, "If my argument is compelling, then maybe we would ask for continuance," so. Uh, and, and the reason I'm suggesting that those be made, other than the fact that that's exactly what he asked in, in the, uh, transcript, is that I think that's why the board didn't act on that, is because we didn't think that was a compelling argument. We were ceding to him that we, that the use was a legally pre-existing, uh, use before the property was sold. And I said in the notice decision, "We didn't make any establishment of when that, uh, pre-existing use ended, except after the property was purchased." So, um, all the arguments that Phil was making and everybody else was, that it wasn't a legal existing use, including myself, because I mentioned that it had never been approved for commercial use, the garage that had been built. Was irrelevant, and we didn't base the decision on that, we went through the criteria, based solely on, and Megan had made the point too, that, uh, and, and Rick did, that the one-year discontinuance had occurred, and that they had ample opportunity to, to bring that up. All that time that after they bought it, they were planning on putting, you know, trying to get plans to put up the, uh, this skating rink, uh, indoor skating rink, and, uh, they, uh, were producing plans to the planning board, they never once mentioned anything about the garage, they, all they would have had to have done is just to say they intended to continue using the garage, and then.
Well, I'm not sure that that's true, I mean, they did do that, so I'm, to respect them, if that, they failed to do it themselves.
Yeah, and, and.
Do we want to finish the minutes and then go to?
The discussion.
That discussion.
Yeah, yeah, you're right, we, we, we've now gotten off, so those are the changes to the minutes that I would recommend. Um, and I, I will make the motion, the, the minutes.
Why don't I make the motion?
Okay.
Corrections were pursued by the trailer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I told you, so, what was?
The motion was to keep the minutes with the correction made by the chair.
Yeah.
Okay, and do we have a second?
We need a second.
Okay, Shaw, what's that?
Just one question, on the, on line twenty-three, it says dated August eleventh, twenty twenty-two, I just want to make sure that twenty twenty-two is correct, not twenty twenty-three.
Rules and procedures, oh, yeah, I've got it. August eleventh, twenty twenty-two, we changed the rules just this year to allow for the ten-thirty closing. You know, no, no new business after ten, that was the biggest change.
Right, so, I just checking that that date of twenty twenty-two is cor, versus twenty-three is correct, I, I.
Yes, because, because that was the last one before we made the, oh, that's right, yeah, that is about the changes. Yes, it's just, so, it's the twenty twenty-two rules that we are changing, we now have new rules effective September twenty twenty-three, so.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, that's unanimous, five zero. Okay, now, we'll go to the discussion of the, uh, request for rehearing. And, uh, does anybody want to make a point in favor of granting a rehearing, or in opposition to, and, uh, and arguments for and against the, uh, or arguments in response to the, uh, letter that we received?
Or could we just note the, um, the email that we got?
I think we have to make a motion, and then I think we have the discussion.
Okay.
Be, you know, we can't have a discussion without a motion.
Okay. Well, no, we.
Right, you make a motion, then you.
Well, no, we can, we can discuss.
I don't think you discuss before a motion, because you have nothing to discuss, because there's no motion.
Well, you, you could, I mean, normally you would have a motion on the floor.
Yeah.
Okay, why don't we?
The way the motion might be, you might want to have some discussion, and then make the motion based upon that, especially if it's acceptable, certainly, we're not formal rule of procedure here, so. But I'm going to move to deny the mo, motion here.
Okay, Rick, your, your microphone? Yes, I'm, oh, yeah, this is, because this is part of a public hearing, this is a, uh, request, uh, from Sauhegan River View Investments, uh, for a rehearing of the Sep, October nineteenth, uh, hearing in which their, uh, request for a variance was denied by the ZBA, um, for a, uh, commercial garage in a, um, in the C-one zone, I believe, so, uh, where it's prohibited, so.
And I, I would move to deny the motion for a hearing.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, a second from Shaw? And.
If you didn't get anybody, I will.
Okay, yeah, no, Shaw, Shaw already did, and, um, the, uh, now, this is open for discussion. Anybody want to chime in with reasons for denial, or?
Yeah, I mean, I would go with our attorneys, the consul, that, that email.
Yeah, except that, um, I, I would say that the attorney was sent a letter supporting the position uh, that we were not required to conduct a rehearing, just because, uh, as we discussed earlier, uh, a request for a rehearing, a request for a continuance had come about, we, uh, had explained, and we're kind of rehashing this, but we explained that the request for rehearing was not necessary, because we weren't basing our decision on, uh, extra material required to show that the property was, uh, that there was a pre-existing condition, uh, pre-existing, um, non-conforming use, so. And, and in both cases, there are two cases where he requested, uh, continuation, uh, and in both cases, they were conditional requests, he used the word "if" in both cases. Uh, and we explained why we felt that was not required, and he didn't argue then that he would still want continuation. So, um, so on, on that, uh, and on that aspect, I would certainly concur that, uh, that we aren't required just because of the continuation request, uh, to, to rehear that. Are there any other points that you think that were made in here that, uh, you know, new evidence presented, or errors of the board?
There's no new evidence, I mean, they waited more than a year, year to, uh.
Right.
Come forward, and so they, they lost what they might have had, even if they had, if they ever had any.
Right, uh, and, and Mr. Jones actually said that, um, that, uh, you know, that, he was, I'm not sure how much the garage expiry was at the top of his mind, meaning Mr. Connors' mind, and obviously, that doesn't change the fact that it has expired now. So they were not arguing the point of, of expiration, they were.
I think, I, I put mine on three places, number one, in my opinion, they didn't really do the due diligence, somebody should have been checking on this. And in my opinion, they dropped the ball, now they want us to pick it up. But I also look at this email from our attorney, and last sentence, "So no, I would not grant a rehearing on that, based on this email." So our attorney is recommending that.
No, she, she said that, um, she wouldn't base it, uh, the granting, not grant, she would not grant a rehearing request based on, and there was a specific question was.
Right, well, it was a conditional request, I mean.
Yeah, the, on the, just on, on the continuation request, so, so that's why I'm saying, we, we kind of covered that, uh, we, uh, we just, if there was anything else in the letter from the attorney that would indicate that we had made a mistake, or that we, uh, or that there was new evidence they were going to present, and I don't think there was anything new evidence present, he was trying to say that we made a mistake, because we, um, didn't apply the right standard or whatever, but we went through the, uh, the variance procedures, and, um, so I, I, I concur that, that we don't need to, uh, conduct a rehearing.
Revote?
Anybody else? All right, uh, well, take a vote, uh, whether, uh, do you feel that, that the motion was on the floor to do not grant the rehearing request, and so.
To deny it.
To deny it, yes, so all those in favor of denying the rehearing request, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, that's five zero. Okay, and we did the minutes, is there any other business to come before the board tonight? Do we have anything on our agenda that we didn't discuss?
No correspondence?
Oh, no correspondence, and, um, I did want to mention, and actually, Rick is probably the one to talk about this, um, our final budget request had gone in with an increase for Robin's salary based on, uh, recalc, recalculation, not an increase in her hourly salary, but an increase in the amount of hours that we need to, to, to have her paid for next year, because we had miscalculated a little bit, because she'd only worked a partial, part of the year. And I don't believe that was gut. Uh, I, last night, we certainly didn't cut anything, because it was lower than the default budget, but, um, you didn't cut that zoning board request out, so. So we should have enough if we don't go, if we don't get big projects like the one that came up on Tuesday night. I, I started to think, that has to go to the plan, this is ZBA, because.
Do you have a meeting, so, is there anything moving forward?
Oh, do we have any requests for next month yet?
No.
And we have until another week or so?
No, we do not have any, I think we have, like, yeah, next week.
Nexus, what's that?
The twenty.
Oh, the, the next week until, for a deadline for people to get, yeah, there are, there, there are some people, have you had any inquiries?
I actually did get one today, an inquiry, so, no application.
Okay.
So maybe.
All right, so that, we'll, we'll put that in the maybe file, and we'll let you know uh, after the twentieth. All right.
And I'm working on the calendar for next year, too.
Next year, okay. Oh, yeah, microphone.
The next budget meeting, committee meeting will be in January sixth, uh, here, to discuss, uh, you know, make, kind of a judgment day on the budget itself, and take a vote.
All right. Uh, unless there's any other business to come before the board, the board is adjourned at eight to ten.